Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the December 20th, 2021, Pitt County Board of Commissioners. This time we can go ahead and call the roll.
Yes, Chairman Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Vice Chair Albright.
Here.
Commissioner Coulson.
Here.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins.
Here.
Commissioner McLawhorn.
Here.
Commissioner Nunley.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yeah.
It is noted that everyone is present with the exception of Commissioner White. I'm sorry, Commissioner White.
I'm first of all.
Got you.
Okay, this time if everyone could stand, we'll have the invocation in place.
Shall we pray? Eternal God, we come first of all to thank you. Thank you for this day, and thank you for life, health, and strength. We ask now, God, that you come into this meeting, have it to be the way you want it to be. Guide and lead us. It's our prayer. This is in our holy name. Amen.
Face flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Madam Court.
Chairman Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn.
Here.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yeah.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
At this time, Mr. Manager, do we have any public addresses to the board? Yes, sir. We have one person signed up, Andrew Schmidt. The county attorney will read our brief statement on public address at the board, and Mr. Schmidt will come forward.
I will. Good evening. Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. Please state your name prior to speaking. I'll keep your time at three minutes per speaker.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Andrew Schmidt. I'm the president and CEO of Visit Greenville NC and the Greenville-Pitt County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Joining me is Gray Williams, and she's the executive director of the Greenville-Pitt County Sports Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. We're here tonight to offer our organizational view of how ARPA funds can be utilized to make Pitt County a more competitive destination, and also ask for assistance from the county to help our CVB recover from the financial losses that COVID has caused as a result of lower occupancy taxes. From a destination marketing viewpoint, ARPA funds are a once-in-a-lifetime financial opportunity to invest in a project that will bring a long-lasting economic impact to Pitt County. For example, the creation of an outdoor sports complex would have the potential to increase economic impact and first-time exposure into Pitt County. During the weekends, green space tournaments could be hosted that would bring in thousands of visitors, giving a huge economic boost to our local hotels, restaurants, and retail establishments. During the work week, an outdoor sports complex can be utilized by county residents, promoting health and wellness while serving as a practice area for all types of sports. Another example would be the redevelopment of First Street along the Tar River, increasing retail, restaurant, and entertainment options. A transformative project that I think would anchor First Street development is the construction of a performing arts center overlooking the town common and the Tar River. The average visitor spends more money while engaged in arts and cultural tourism than in any other travel market. Other examples of destination projects that would have long-lasting economic effects include the construction of an indoor recreation facility, installation of additional water-access ramps, water-wayfinding signage, and even a water park. Tourism has a direct impact on jobs, residents' tax savings, and the overall economic health of Pitt County. Although it has been quite challenging, our CVB has been able to assist county travel partners recover from the effects of the pandemic. During 2021, we hosted numerous sports tournaments, including the 2021 Little League Softball World Series, and pushed outdoor and culinary travel that benefited not only Greenville but our other wonderful towns and residents in Pitt County like Farmville, Winterville, Aiden, and others. Despite our success, the CVB lost 45% of its revenues from lower occupancy taxes over the last 20 months, as much of the travel that we did bring in was day travel only. Many counties are offering financial assistance to CVBs to help them recover. We would like to ask the county commissioners to consider including the CVB in any grant awards or other programs that may be part of the county's American Rescue Plan expenditures, so we may bring back our marketing efforts back to pre-pandemic levels. Gray, I would like to thank you for your time and consideration this evening. We're happy to answer any questions or talk with you individually about the role our CVB could play in any transformative projects at the county's sides to entertain. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Manager, I believe we have a couple of presentations. Yes, did Ms. Williams, did you want to speak?
If y'all had any questions about the sports side.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, if we can get the board to approve, if we can actually do all four resolutions in one motion, if you could.
Vote to approve. Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Madam Court.
Chairman Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn.
Here.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
If we can ask Commissioner Ann Floyd Huggins to join us.
Mr. Chairman, we have a presentation of a resolution for a former chairwoman. Would you like me to proceed and read this? Office of the Pitt County Commissioners, Resolution of Appreciation Honoring Ann Floyd Huggins as Chairwoman. Whereas Ann Floyd Huggins has served faithfully and honorably as Chairwoman of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners from December 2020 to December 2021. Whereas Ann Floyd Huggins has provided the Board of Commissioners with steadfast leadership and commitment as Chairwoman. Whereas Ms. Huggins was the first African-American woman to be selected by her peers to serve as Chairwoman of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. Whereas under Chairwoman Floyd Huggins' leadership, Pitt County aided the citizens in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas under Chairwoman Floyd Huggins' tenure, the NC-43 South Rains Plan was completed. Whereas under Chairman Floyd Huggins' leadership, the Board of Commissioners transitioned the five-member Industrial Development Commission Board into a Department of County Government. Whereas under Chairman Floyd Huggins' leadership, security upgrades were made to protect the citizens and the Board of Commissioners during public meetings. And whereas Chairwoman Floyd Huggins was instrumental in passing a resolution to support the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Initiative on Food System Resiliency. And whereas under Chairwoman Floyd Huggins' leadership, the Board of County Commissioners established the Pitt County Human Relations Commission. And whereas due to COVID-19 meeting constraints, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins successfully and effectively led the Board as Chairwoman using the virtual meeting environment via Zoom meetings and through the transition back to in-person meetings. And whereas during her tenure, the Chairwoman was also an integral part of the Pitt County Government by serving on various boards and commissions such as the Board of Equalization Review, the Trillion Health Resources Central Region Advisory Board. Now therefore be resolved, the members of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners commend Ann Floyd Huggins for her efficient leadership and outstanding service as Chairwoman of the Board of Commissioners for the calendar year 2021, adopted this 20th day of December 2021, signed by our Chairman Mike Fitzpatrick and attested by our Clerk Kimberly W. Heinz. Mr. Chairman?
Ann, thank you very much for your service. I know this past year's been a lot to take on, and you did it admirably. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, and I was honored to serve as Chairwoman. Thank you.
We have a similar resolution prepared for Mr. Fitzpatrick as vice chairman, but do you want to? We can go ahead and skip that. We hear enough from him anyway. All right. If we can ask Jan Elliott to come forward. Welcome.
This is exciting.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to proceed and read it? Framed resolution.
Resolution honoring Jan Elliott for her years of service with Pitt County Government. Whereas Jan Elliott was hired July 8, 2017, in the position of Director of the Pitt County Department of Social Services. And whereas Jan Elliott has faithfully served the citizens of Pitt County for seven years and four months. Whereas Jan Elliott exhibited the highest degree of professionalism as shown through her honesty, commitment, and loyalty in serving the citizens of Pitt County. Whereas through her devotion to the welfare of the vulnerable, Jan Elliott was rooted in policy and program delivery functions, which has earned her the respect and admiration within the state and beyond. Whereas Ms. Elliott has over 42 years of public service in several capacities, including Certified Public Manager, Regional Director with North Carolina Department of Social Services, Local State and County Support Manager, Director of Social Services, Consultant, and Mentor. And whereas during Jan Elliott's tenure with Pitt County, she reorganized the agency for Program Competencies. Competencies, thank you. Was able to meet the 90% to 95% of the state and federal benchmarks in all programs. Whereas Jan Elliott was involved with several agencies and boards such as the Martin Pitt Partnership for Children, Access East Board Member, Directors Advocacy Work Group, Racial Trauma Work Group, Child Abuse Prevention Program, Child Abuse Work Group, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and the Pitt County Employment of People with Disabilities. And whereas Jan Elliott believed in employee development and career advancement and has instituted a staff development program for the Pitt County Department of Social Services. Now therefore be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its gratitude and thanks to Jan Elliott for her career of dedicated and exemplary service to the people of Pitt County, and honors her with this resolution of appreciation given under our hand and the seal of Pitt County, again adopted this 20th day of December 21, signed by our chairman and attested by our clerk. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. So thank you so much for your service. This was well deserved.
Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yes.
Do you want me to hold that for you?
That would be lovely. Thank you, so I don't drop it. You know, I came for two years. I stayed seven. And I think that is a testament to what's going on here in Pitt County and the fabulous support that I have had from this board, from county government, and the wonderful staff that I have worked with over these seven years. So it's sort of a bittersweet, but it's time to go, and so I really want to say thank you to everybody.
Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to read the resolution for our retiring county manager, Donald Scott Elliott. And it reads, "Resolution Honoring Donald Scott Elliott for his years of service with Pitt County Government. Whereas Donald Scott Elliott was hired April 1, 2002 in the position of County Manager of Pitt County Government. And whereas Scott Elliott has faithfully served the citizens of Pitt County for 19 years and nine months. And whereas Scott Elliott, while serving as County Manager, led Pitt County safely through Hurricane Isabel in 2003, Hurricane Irene in 2011, Hurricane Matthew in 2016, and Hurricane Florence in 2018. And whereas Scott Elliott led the county during the transition of Pitt County Mental Health to a consolidated system of regional, local management entities. And whereas Scott Elliott advocated for and collaborated with community stakeholders to realize a successful 2007 referendum, enabling a local option 1/4% sales tax to further K-12 and community college education funding. And whereas Scott Elliott practiced sound fiscal management, leading the county through the 2008 economic recession without an involuntary reduction in force. Implemented strategies to rebuild the general fund balance and maintain it within the Board's policy goal, enhanced the county's bond ratings, and presented a sound, balanced budget every year. And whereas Scott Elliott improved emergency management in the county by transitioning the county fire tax protection districts to fire tax service districts, enhancing the county's 700 megahertz radio and paging system, constructing a 911 backup center, and launching the Community Paramedic Program. And whereas Scott Elliott was influential in the expansion of the Leroy James Farmers Market, the Pitt County Animal Shelter, and the Pitt County Industrial Shell Building. And whereas Scott Elliott was influential in the Woodmore Subdivision Road Improvement and Candlewood Area Sanitary District Programs. And whereas, under Scott Elliott's leadership, Pitt County was named 2016 People's Choice, Great Place for Healthy Living, 2017 Great Places in America at the Pitt County Home Complex, and 2020 All-America County by the National Civic League. And whereas, under Scott Elliott's leadership, Pitt County hosted the 2010 and 2015 annual conferences of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And under Scott Elliott's leadership, Pitt County aided the citizens in the response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Scott Elliott served on various boards and commissions such as the United Way Board of Directors, Pitt County Art Council, Greenville-Pitt County Chamber of Commerce, and the Red Cross Board of Directors. And whereas Scott Elliott will long be remembered for his even temperament, strong faith, appreciation of diversity, and robust dialogue, and his effective management style. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its gratitude and thanks to Donald Scott Elliott for his career of dedicated and exemplary service to the people of Pitt County, and honors him with this resolution of appreciation given under our hand and seal of Pitt County this the 20th day of December 2021, signed by Chairman Mike Fitzpatrick and attested by Kimberly W. Heinz, Clerk, to the board.
Scott, thank you for your service. We hope that you enjoy your retirement. You certainly deserve it.
If I could make a couple of brief comments. One, my management philosophy and my ability to manage and lead is deeply embedded in my faith in the Lord and my dependency upon Him to give me wisdom, but also by the support of this board through the years of the guidance, the direction, correction at times that I may have needed. And also, gosh, within Pitt County Government management team, I mean, this, all these things you list here, this was not me alone. This was a collaborative of management team, central staff, department heads, and our workforce. Everything listed here is a testament to the organization. Not to me, I understand the resolution, but I appreciate everything. And I've appreciated it my almost 20 years with Pitt County. And Pitt County is the fourth county that I've worked in North Carolina, starting in Guilford, then as an Alaman's, then a manager in Robinson, and now here in Pitt. So looking forward to retiring after 34 and a half years of public service and have enjoyed almost every minute of it. To be truthful, almost every minute of it.
I'm sorry if we can now move on to item number eight, the public hearings.
Good evening. Merry Christmas, everyone. Mr. Chairman, we have two public hearings tonight. Both are for conditional district rezoning requests. The first one for Philippe Garcia Ortiz. Mr. Ortiz, you'll be familiar with this property. We'll go through the site in just a minute, some of its characteristics. But it's one that you've dealt with previously. This is about an acre and 3/4, located at the intersection of 264 East and Old Washington Road. The current zoning is the same zoning we're going to, which is a little bit odd, but with conditional district, it deals with the specific uses being requested. So we'll go through the details in a minute, but it's from general commercial conditional district to general commercial conditional district for the express purpose of an automotive repair service. A little bit of history on this site. This was rezoned from rural agricultural to light industrial back in 2005. That was never developed as a light industrial type use. Moved forward to February of 2020. This was rezoned to general commercial conditional district for the express purposes of an automotive repair, automotive towing service, and motor vehicle sales along with tire sales. So a lot of different uses were proposed here. That particular owner never got those businesses up and operating per code. In turn, that property's now been sold to Mr. Ortiz, and in turn, this is the site that we're dealing with right on the edge of the Pitt County-Bowford County line, intersection of 264 East and Old Washington Road. A little bit closer with the parcel line shown, along with overlaid on top of the aerials, is our comprehensive land use plan designations. This area, just about this entire lot we're dealing with, is within the commercial crossroads area. And I'll give you a little detail on that in a minute. Existing land uses, this is fairly undeveloped. It's been cleaned off now. The site looks a lot better than it has in the last year or so. But it is also adjacent to a fair amount of residential property. You may recall, a year or so ago, there was a rezoning across 264 for what's now a Family Dollar store. There's also within this mix some other commercial operations, as well as a couple of churches, those shown in blue. So the commercial crossroads designation is, like it says, is pretty much an opportunity for a number of different uses, a mix of residential, public institutional, and commercial uses. But between residential and commercial, there should be some appropriate buffers put in place. The land uses within the category could develop with either public sewer or private septic systems. Also, this area would provide a number of different services for those people that live in the general vicinity. Our current zoning, as I've already mentioned, it is general commercial already, and you can see the area's been zoned for general commercial at the corner of Grimeson Bridge and 264 for the Dollar General. And general commercial allows for a lot of different types of commercial uses, but again, for conditional district rezoning, this is for one and only one use tonight, and that is for automotive repair service. And with these types of rezonings, you'll also have a site plan. In this case, a sketch plan's been shown and is available. 264 is one of the larger arterial highways within the community. We do have a highway buffer that's required there, and the corner that's adjacent to the road right of way requires a 50-foot buffer yard. Also, buffer yards around the perimeter, 20 foot wide. NC DOT is trying to push the driveway as far inward on Old Washington Road as possible, and so in turn, they put a 10-foot non-access easement there. The building shown in blue is where the garage will be located, along with the parking area that's required, handicap spots as well. This is the existing driveway that will be retained, but it is outside of that non-access easement along the road right of way. Through the review, planning staff has taken a look at the sketch plan, as well as the information that's been provided, and believe that it is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan and is reasonable and in the public's interest. The planning board likewise reviewed it at its November meeting, also recommended approval, and that it is consistent with the land use plan. So two motions tonight, Mr. Chair, the consistency statement, as well as the reasonableness statement. And the second motion is to actually approve that request with a number of different conditions that are included in your package tonight. And if anyone has any questions about those additional conditions, and Mr. Ortiz has already signed that he's receptive of all those conditions that have been placed on it so far. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for the public hearing tonight.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Chairman, at this time, we have nobody signed up, unless there's somebody in the audience who wants to come forward and speak. Being that there is no one signed up to address the board, go ahead and close the public hearing. At this time, I'd entertain any motions.
I'll attend.
Questions? Sure. I believe in Ms. Ward.
No, go on. I was just going to make a motion, but you have a question. You said.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, James. And I appreciate all of the conditions and the hard work that's gone into that. I'm still trying to, as you know, understand all these processes, and can you address just the ideas of lighting, noise, and hours of operation that may well be covered in other areas here?
Again, if the board would like to see any restrictions on the hours of operation, we are not proposing any at this point in time.
Have we not encountered some difficulty in parts of the county with auto and towing operations operating late night? I'm not sure how, I didn't quite get how close the houses were up here. I know the 264 makes a difference.
There is one I can show you on the map, probably a little bit easier.
Do we have hours of operation for other similar businesses?
We have imposed some. In fact, I believe there were some imposed on the previous operation here on this site. So it depends. We've looked at some sand mine operations previously, too, as far as potentially putting some hours of operation in line. So it's really dependent upon usually requests by adjacent property owners, and all these property owners have been notified of this rezoning.
And so on that map, where is the structure of the house?
Structure is right here, just adjacent to it on the north side.
And those folks have no complaints?
Not at this point, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose, I recall the last time this property came before us, there was a letter placed at our seats that the business owner, and I think it was the same name, it was a Garcia. She was concerned about the hours, early morning hours, and the dogs. So is that a problem? Did it check out? She may not set this time because the last time the board didn't even listen, and it just voted to approve.
Well, remember, this is a little, this is more limited than the other uses that were there previously. When you get into towing businesses, they can operate almost on a 24-hour basis. This is an automotive repair service exclusively now. So a little bit difference in the operation there.
Thank you. I want to bring that up because I did hear some even after about it, and so I wanted to make sure that it was covered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A move that we adopt the consistency statement as outlined by Pitt County Planning Staff and attached therein in our addendum to the agenda packet.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Madam Court?
Chairman Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make a motion to approve the request to rezone by the petitioner as outlined in our agenda packet addendum, as outlined by Pitt County Planning Staff.
It's been moved and second. Madam Court?
Chairman Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Mr. Chairman, our second public hearing tonight is also for conditional zoning request, and this again for general commercial. This is by Tony Moore. Give a little insight on this, this is about four acres in size, it's located at the intersection of Four Lines and Spate Sea Farm Road, and again, going from rural agricultural to general commercial conditional district, and this is expressly for a self-storage facility. Just to orient you a bit and give you an update, too, as far as this is a little bit different, we won't be referring actually to our comprehensive land use plan, but you may recall, there's been an update to our comprehensive plan to go along with a Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan that was developed about three years ago. This particular site, again, located at the corner, the northern corner of Spate Sea Farm Road and Four Lines Road, is within that planning area for the Southwest Bypass. Little bit closer, this is the property in question, about four acres again, right on the corner there. This shows for the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan, the area, the entire area here in this green is zoned as our, is in the land use category as agriculture. Existing land uses in and around that area, some in gold, you can see sporadic residential sites. Right across the road from there, in blue, is a church, couple of little commercial sites right at Heinz Crossroads, which is the intersection of US 13 and Spate Sea Farm slash Nash Joint As I mentioned, this is within the agricultural land use plan designation, and that area, per our Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan, is devoted to agricultural uses which can include forestry, crop production, livestock, and pasture land. Policies could also include restrictions on density and size of subdivisions within these key areas, so no real mention of any types of commercial operations. There's also two policy recommendations that were adopted as part of that land use plan to encourage a land use pattern that capitalizes on opportunities for commercial and industrial development while limiting strip development. And again, within this agricultural area, not mentioning any commercial development there. The other one also is to protect agriculture within the study area, and that is particularly within this agriculture designation within the land use plan. So again, our current zoning in this area, you can see in red, just a couple of small commercial sites right at the intersection of Heinz Crossroads. The silver bullet area also includes a couple of commercial. Outside of that, everything is rural agricultural, including the site that's under consideration tonight. This general commercial district is primarily intended to accommodate a wide range of different general commercial activities. The conditional district request for tonight, again, is for self-storage warehouse. With that comes the site plan, similar to the one that we had previously, and this gives you a lot more detail of what's proposed on this four-acre site. In particular, the boundary, that's the four acres to, in total, the proposed self-storage units, and you can see some of the site data up here at the top, a little bit more than an acre is going to be included in the self-storage buildings themselves, along with some parking area. Stormwater pond, a lot of impervious surfaces would require the stormwater pond to be located there if it is developed. And then also, a 10-foot vegetative buffer would be required along the perimeter. Planning staff has reviewed this and believe that it is not consistent with the Southwest land, Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan for a number of reasons already previously stated, and do not believe that it's reasonable in, in, in the best public interest. Planning Board also reviewed it at its November meeting and similarly recommended denial of this request tonight. So there are two motions that are being recommend, recommended tonight. The first one, the consistency statement, to basically say it's not consistent with the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan. And then the second one would be to deny the request for the rezoning. Mr. Chairman, we're ready for the public hearing.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to address the board?
Mr. Chairman, there's nobody signed up, unless there's somebody in the audience who'd like to come forward.
Hearing, no one, go ahead and close the public hearing. At this time, I don't entertain any motions.
Chair, yes, I'd move that we accept the, both the planning board and planning staff's recommendation to deny the, well, to, as to the consistency statement, indicate that it is not consistent with the Southwest Bypass Plan as, as outlined in the agenda packet.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and properly second.
I don't know how it gets second, I want to make a comment if you don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay.
Because you weren't looking this way, and I didn't know if you saw that, I wanted to bring it up.
I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'd like to ask why this does not, when it's at an intersection, and storage space would be quite accommodating for the residential tenants there. I don't understand why this is not appropriate, and what would the Southwest Bypass interfere with this kind of commerce?
Again, based off the designations that were adopted as part of that land use plan, this area is primarily set aside for more agriculturally oriented activities, whether it be forestry, whether it be row crops, and some limited residential, and this particular use is neither.
Wouldn't you say that this kind of business would be very amenable to residents in doing storage? A lot of residents have to drive a long ways to store stuff, and there are residents up and down there, if I saw that plan correctly?
Again, I think it is appropriate in appropriate locations, and based off the land use plan, this is not one of them.
Well, there was a, an approval once before when the resident objected, and the, the person who bringing the comment came up, the board voted in approval, but this one, the resident is not objecting, but the thing of it is, it is amenable to residential life and a residential lifestyle.
And that may be the case. I think the main thing, as we've discussed with the new planning legislation, there is a requirement that any of these rezoning requests have to be consistent with the land use plan, otherwise, the land use plan would need to be changed. So there's a couple of options there. If you believe that this is an appropriate location, the land use plan would need to be amended at the same time.
Isn't part of it already zoned for commerce?
Up at the Heinz Crossroads area, yes, on US 13.
So part of it is commerce and part of it can't be.
And that was prior to the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan, yes.
Seems like a conflict.
Thank you. Motion has been agreed and properly second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
No.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you. If we can now move on to items for report.
Mr. Chair, also I'd like to second motion to deny the, formally deny the request as outlined by.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and properly second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
No.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now moving on to items for report, Ms. Gallagher.
Yes, this evening's legislative summary update is contained in your agenda package beginning at page 47. You have information in there that you can read. There's just one that I'd like to highlight this evening, and that's the first one on page 48, that Senate Bill 473. And what this bill does, it's called Enhance Local Government Transparency, and I just wanted to bring this one to your attention. This bill creates a new misdemeanor penalty for public officials, meaning county commissioners, participating in making or administering a contract, including the award of money during a budget, with any nonprofit which with the public, with which the public official is associated, including serving on a governing board of that nonprofit. So this legislation went through over some objection from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners because it wasn't totally clear. And what it does on its face is if any commissioner serves on a nonprofit board, then you could not participate in voting on a budget that awards money to that board, or you cannot enter into any sort of a contract with that board. And so if, for example, Biden Health is a nonprofit board, the board couldn't enter into a contract without the board member serving recusing themselves. I believe that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is going to try to make a technical correction or assist with this language, but until such time, this is the law. In the next few weeks, we'll have the clerk reach out to each of you to confirm what nonprofit boards you may sit on, so that I can be sure, as your counsel, that if there's an item that could create a potential conflict, that we'll know about it and you can recuse yourself from that discussion and vote. And then hopefully, this will be fixed prior to adoption of budgets and later in the spring. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Everything else, I think you'll, you are familiar with. There were several vetoes by the governor. There's a section in there on highlights of the budget and a separate report from the NCACC on the 21, 22 state budget that was adopted. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk?
I just wanted to say that I think the public needs to know that all of us sitting on this board serve on boards in the county on a regular basis each year, and sometimes they're new appointments, sometimes they're repeat appointments, so it's really important that, you know, we understand this and know this, so.
That's a good point, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Fitzpatrick, Commissioners, Manager Elliott, it's good to be with y'all tonight, and Merry Christmas. Tonight I bring you the November 2021 Tax Collection Report. The Pitt County fiscal year to date, July 1 through, July 1, 2021 through November 30th, 2021, the combined collection rate for real and personal property is 73.27 percent. The combined collection rate one year ago for real and personal property was 68.72 percent. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies made available through the North Carolina general statutes. It's my recommendation for the board to approve the November 2021 Tax Collection Report as presented.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair. Second. It's been moved and properly second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right, Mr. Burnett?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. You have in front of you tonight the November 30th Financial Report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the EMS Fund. We are five months into the year. This is 41.67 percent of the way. On the general fund side, we have collected 50.7 percent of revenues while only spending 43.3 percent of expenses. On the solid waste side, we have collected 63.8, 86 percent of revenues while spending 42.11 percent of expenses. And on the EMS side, we have collected 55.8, 48 percent while only spending 50.6 cents, 66 percent of expenses. Also want to take a minute to give a plug that we are still taking ideas for our American Rescue Plan funding until the end of December. We've had a really good turnout from a survey, online survey standpoint. We have received close to 60 surveys. I got two or three today. They're coming in on a really consistent basis, so just want to put a plug in there one more time that we are taking those surveys until the end of the month, and I want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. Well, what problem?
I should approve, or that'll be a second.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and properly second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Few things to report on. Your next meeting dates, the month of January of 2022, you'll have your one meeting that month on January 10th due to the New Year's holiday and the Martin Luther King recognition. You will then have on January 24th, your annual capital budget workshop, Capital CIP Budgeting Workshop, and that will be, I believe, will be in EFC. It'll actually be up here in the Gene James Auditorium. So it'll be at 8:00 AM and normally runs until about lunchtime. Item B is not a new announcement, but just wanted to reiterate the board's action to appoint our county attorney, Janice Gallagher, as the interim manager, fully effective once I leave in January, and I can congratulate her, congratulate her on her, her new role as, on the basis. Item C, another, another vacancy coming up in the organization with our DSS Director, Janie Elliott retiring at the end of the year, as, as well as myself. The DSS Board has voted to also appoint an interim director, and they have voted to have Dr. Augustine Frazier, who currently serves as the Assistant DSS Director, to be in the interim role while they continue to vet the applications that have been received, and will be conducting an interview process for that position. Item D on my list of items is labeled Uptown Greenville Property Acquisition. This is in regard to a matter previously discussed with the, the board in the last meeting regarding Parcel 18, 186 and Parcel 19006, which is the property located at 100 East First Street in Uptown Greenville. This is the former Ag Carolina facility. Staff was authorized to enter into negotiations with the, the property owner on this to acquire this for the use of our registered deeds department, and we have, went through a back-and-forth and a process of negotiating our property, and we have landed on the price tag of $1,250,000. Started well below that threshold, but it went up to a million 250. So what we are asking, this is all, this is all settled verbally, basically at the end of the week after the, the agenda package was printed, so we're asking for the board to approve a motion to approve the purchase, and for the manager to be able to execute all closing documents regarding this matter.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Also in front of you.
Second.
Commissioner White, I believe we have one more item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got a little ahead of myself.
So in front of you, you have the Chairman Fitzpatrick's Chairman's Appointments before you as to the different committees and boards and commissions that he has, has designated, and that's again before you for your reading purposes, needs. Had one other item to report to you, and that is wanted to just briefly make a comment regarding Pitt County's assistance and the response to the QVC fire this, this past weekend, Saturday and Sunday. I asked Randy Gentry to prepare some information on this. Pitt County did assist Edgewood County Emergency Management and the, all the different emergency personnel that, that fought that tremendous fire of the QVC plant, 1.2 million square feet of space, of which the majority of it, of it burned, and there was one unfortunate fatality. But Randy tells me that throughout the three operational periods, Pitt County had staff and apparatus from Winterville Town, Winterville Community, Red Oak, Farmville. and apparatus from Winterville Town, Winterville Community, Red Oak, Farmville, Fountain, Falkland, Aiden, Simpson, Pactolas, Bevel, Clark, and the Clark's Next Departments. We were basically, when the Edgewcombe County EM reached out to Randy Gentry as the EM Director, they were looking for tankers, for basically water haulers and manpower, because they were against water pressure issues or as such. So we were able to assist in that tragic event and wanted to let you know that we were involved in that. And just thank all the different volunteers. I see we have Chad Singleton here. I know he's with the Red Oak Volunteer Fire Department. Like to thank them as well as anybody who, from Pitt County, who participated in this response. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner White, now we can entertain your motion.
I got it.
Okay, now I would like to make a motion to the items working.
I second it.
It's been moved and properly second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nully?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If we can now move on to items for decision, Mr. Singleton.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I've been coming for you tonight, requesting approval to accept donations from Marilyn Thompson. She's with Accounting and Business Solutions. You might remember in 2018, Ms. Thompson attempted to make a $10,000 contribution for the purposes of building a catio outside feline area in conjunction with the construction project that's going on out at the animal shelter. Unfortunately, due to time constraints going on at that particular time, she was unable to do that, so she allowed the funds to be allocated for a spay, local spay and neuter program. After reaching back out to Ms. Thompson, as the project is coming closer to closure, Ms. Thompson has now agreed to fund half of the catio outside feline area, or approximately $35,000, providing that the county matched those funds as a requirement. After speaking with management and finance, we believe that we can absorb that $35,000 our part additional costs from the animal shelter budget. So requesting a recommendation from you guys to accept the donation from Mrs. Thompson and continue to move forward with that project.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nully?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder, I don't know if we've ever done this before, but, you know, this is really, you know, done out of just, no one's asked for it, no one's requested. We don't have the project going. She just did this because she wanted to? And I wondered if we could just send her a letter of thanks and just let the secretary or the manager or whoever, you know.
I think we could do that at a minimum.
Yes.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Paul. Your continued forward.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Chairman Fitzpatrick and Commissioners, County Manager. Happy holidays to you all. There's three items that I have that are related to our site and building development for industrial recruitment. The first is an item for consideration for the purchase of 20 acres in Farmville Corporate Park. This purchase of 20 acres, which is lots one and two, and I'm not sure with the map. Thank you. Yes. So the two, lots one and two in yellow highlighted are the item, the option, excuse me, the offer to purchase those 20 acres for $10,000 an acre or $200,000 total. That's going to be the lots dedicated for the next shell building that Pitt County will be building. And in addition, we are looking to option the remainder of the land in Farmville Corporate Park, most of which is highlighted in green on the same map, which is approximately 150 acres on your abstract. It said 225. 225 included more acreage that is actually optioned by Pitt Green EMC, the Electric Membership Cooperative, for a renewable energy project. So if you back out what they have under option, the remainder that's available is 150 acres, and we would like to take that under option. We've talked to the landowner, and they have agreed on a price of 20,000 an acre for the remainder of that property. The reason that we would like to option this property is to have this under public control for industrial development. It would allow us to go after state and federal infrastructure funds that we would need to either control or own the property in order to do things such as extend utilities, extend the road, that would make this property more desirable for industrial prospects. And we can, under this option, take ownership or sell the property in lots, as you see here, lots one, two, three, four, five, et cetera. You don't have to take it all at one time. You could do it as prospects request the property. And so 20,000 an acre for industrial property that is fully served with utilities is a very reasonable price, and we could exercise our option and then sell that to industrial prospects. So we respectfully ask, as the Pitt County Economic Development Department, that you approve the option for the 20 acres, excuse me, the offer to purchase for the 20 acres and the option on the 150 available acres for industrial development.
Thank you, Kelly. Madam Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify, the offer to purchase attached in your package references lots two and three, and I believe Ms. Andrews stated lots one and two. So we just need to clarify which lots, and so that we can either amend the offer to purchase or amend what it is we're purchasing.
Yes, that, my apologies, there are actually a couple of different maps we were working off of. So when the shell building was first there, it was lots one, it would have been two and three, and we have a new map that says one and two, so we can amend that. It is lots one and two for purchase.
Lots one and two or two and three?
One and two on this map.
Okay.
Ms. Andrews, I have a question. How many industrial parks or how many parks do we have in Pitt County?
We have five industrial parks. There are actually two in Aiden, Minji's and Worthington. There are actually three in Farmville. There are two small ones that are owned by the town of Farmville as far as the land, and then Farmville Corporate Park. So that's five. And then Indigreen Corporate Park, actually six with the Pitt County Industrial Park, industrial site that the county owns.
Is there a proposed industrial park in the Bevel area or what happened with that?
That, that part.
There are options over there that I know about.
Right. Those options expired a couple of years ago. We tried to renew the options, and we could not get but one or two landowners to agree to the options and sign the options. So that park is, is not, at this point, a park that we market, because we do not have signed options on but one or two. One in Pitt County and I believe one in Martin County, because it was a joint Pitt-Martin park. It's something that we could explore going forward, but we could not get at that time those options signed.
I'm very interested in moving Bevel forward as far as receiving some of the opportunities for resources and development in this county. Otherwise, if we keep jumping over or moving around, otherwise they would never get to move forward, and it would kill the town off. So I'd like for this board to be serious about being more reverent with development throughout Pitt County rather than, I'm not saying don't do Farmville, but I'm saying we need to expand our view and seek a more equitable distribution of options and development.
Commissioner Nully?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve the purchase of the 20 acres. Lots one and two is outlined by Director Andrews this evening, and also the option on the other remaining four parcels that are able to be optioned, and then authorize the manager and chair to execute necessary documents to make that move forward.
I second it.
It's been moved and properly second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nully?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is for application for the USDA Redleg Loan Program, which that stands for the Rural Economic Development Loan and Grant Program. This is going to help us fund the shell building for the Farmville Corporate Park. We will use Pitt County funds from the sale of our Indigreen Shell Building, but we will also need additional funds as costs have risen significantly for materials and labor. So we know that the shell building is going to cost more than our other shell building, although it's going to be approximately the same size. We are going to go after that USDA Redleg Loan with your approval. This is through USDA, and what the, what the application would allow us to do is have money in a revolving loan fund that would go to the Pitt Green EMC. So this is the only park in the county that has access to this fund, because it's through a nonprofit utility, which is the Pitt Green EMC. They would set up the revolving loan fund for the amount that we're seeking, which is $1.5 million. And then if approved, then we would receive that $1.5 million with terms of 10 years at 0% interest. We can also ask for a two-year deferral before payback, which would allow us time to build the building, market the building, and potentially even sell the building before making those loan payments. So that would be in addition to the monies that we would use from the county added to $1.5 million from the loan for the cost of the shell building in Farmville.
What's your two approvals, Chair?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nully?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Commissioner White? Motion passes unanimously. And just for the record, I could not make out who made the second. Was it Coulson?
I did.
Kelly.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And the last item, which again refers to the Farmville Shell Building, is that we did go through an RFQ process to review the qualification of applicants for design and construction management services for the Farmville Corporate Park Shell Building. And we did select MHA Works as we deemed that they were the best qualified firm based on their qualifications, based on the RFQ and their ability to fulfill the scope of work within that RFQ as outlined. So we respectfully ask for your approval of that recommendation of MHA Works as our design and construction manager.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nully?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Demery.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
As you know, Pitt County sends our municipal solid waste to Berkey County, which is a private landfill owned by East Carolina Environmental, which is a subsidiary of Republic Services of North Carolina. In our current contract, they have the ability to ask for an increase on an annual basis based on the Consumer Price Index for garbage and trash. This current year, it was 4.41%. Last increase, which was approved June 2020, was 0.16%. The new rate, which would include the mandatory $2, would go from $36 to $37.50, which was budgeted in this year's budget. The item was going to be presented to you guys in August of this year, but back in June, July, and August, we had a number of days where garbage was left on the floor at night. And that is, it's against our permit. We have to have all the garbage off the floor. During this time, I was in constant contact with my state inspector. He knew what was going on. We tried to do everything. There were a number of counties that feed that landfill that had the same problems. Edgewcombe County would close their facility. We never closed ours. We stayed open and kept the garbage going. Matter of fact, the town of Tarboro would bring us trash, because they had no place to take their trash. The state DEQ got involved and met with Republic Services, and finally, things started to turn around, and we got back to normal. And over the last few months, things have gotten really good. Occasionally, maybe there'd be a day or two with equipment breaking down or something, but nothing like it was earlier in the summer. And trust me, it was something that bothered me every day. I woke up many nights thinking about it. But we did get through it. But the good thing is, in our current contract that we signed 2018, one of the things that I wanted to do is put a clause in there that said if we do leave trash on the floor, we can give them liquidated, fine them for leaving trash on the floor. So we were able during that time to assess $36,500 in liquidated damages. Republic Services billed, since July 1st, was billing, has billed us for the $37.50. We have not paid $37.50, because I haven't, I did not come and get authority from you guys. And we've been paying them the old rate. And now I feel like, I feel comfortable coming to you and ask for the increase and go back to July and pay them what we owe, less the $36,500 in liquidated damages, which the back amount would be $31,014. So I'm here asking you to give the manager authority to execute the amended contract with those stipulations.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Aubrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nully?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Board of Education has approached us and sent a letter to the county manager found on page 202 of your agenda package. They have received an offer to sell a parcel of land adjacent to the Stokes School. And under the general statutes, there is a requirement that the county, before the Board of Education can sell a piece of property, the county has the right to purchase it. And so this is a fairly routine matter, and we've done this before any other time the school has attempted to sell property. They are presenting this property to you, Parcel 35726, a portion of that parcel that's highlighted on page 203 of your agenda package. And they're asking the Board of Commissioners whether or not you have interest in purchasing this property or whether or not you will refuse it.
No interest.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. In reading this and as we're entering the ARPA territory and we're exploring ways to invest in communities, I, we don't know where we're going to go with it yet, but I imagine that we might come upon some opportunities where we want to pick low-hanging fruit if we go the route of trying to identify community centers, recreation facilities, things of that nature in various parts of the county, in particular rural parts of the county. To me, the offer that's in the package is a $10,000 offer for a parcel of land that's directly situated in and among. of land that's directly situated in and among where a lot of people live in the rural community in District Two. And it's a historic gymnasium and cafeteria. I don't know anything about the building other than that it's, you know, I've driven by it and seen it in the past. So I would, I would hesitate to accept an offer for $10,000. And I would like us to explore whether or not maybe with our, with our buildings and grounds, if we have any idea what it would take to get, you know, to get, get it to where people can actually use the gym. It is, and again, this is all with, with an eye towards what we're going to be doing next year with ARPA funding. Not talking about general budgetary matters here. We're really talking about what's, what's on the horizon. And we may have the ability to do some really great things in parts of the county that, that don't often get those opportunities. And I would hate to kind of let that low hanging fruit just go away and us be in a position to have to purchase property to do things where we have it already in our, in our portfolio.
Mr. Brainerd.
Mr. Chairman, yes. My understanding of this property and talking to the school superintendent, even past school superintendents, is that there are extreme conditions. I guess would be the best maybe way to couch it in terms of asbestos and whatnot that are associated with this property. Yes, you could use ARPA dollars to rehabilitate the property, but I'm just going to make a guesstimate of a statement. It would probably be more cost effective to build something new than to go in and to try to rehabilitate this gym and cafeteria. I understand the $10,000 price is low, but I can't imagine how much money this individual would need to speak, would need to spend on this. I know Commissioner Ward was principal out there at one time. I don't know if he-
No, not principal, but I was principal at the time.
Okay.
And I remember many years ago, we discussed this right here, the same building and, you know, whatever. And at that time, you know, the thought was to just leave it with the town and let them make a decision about how much renovation they wanted to do and what they wanted to do with it and that it was kind of their decision about, you know, what would happen as to what. And they, at that time, were even talking about taking it down and maybe building, you know, community recreation centers. So I think that, you know, letting them deal with that situation, continue to deal with it. And maybe, you know, we can send the word about our vote. And so we hope that they're looking at it and that sort of thing.
Commissioner Huggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's happening to the rest of the buildings? And she didn't, she wasn't the principal out there, but I worked as secretary there for a number of years. So the other buildings?
This, this building was basically, I guess the best word would be, was closed and pretty much abandoned because of the condition of the building. I believe even the gym floor, the asbestos conditions within the facility. All the other buildings out there, to my knowledge, haven't been out there or have been kept up and are in good, good working order. But they did not have the sufficient capital funds to rehabilitate this facility and didn't have, well, just have the money, I guess, basically is the.
I'd be glad for us to hold off on this and as Commissioner Nunnally has suggested that, you know, we get a better idea of the condition of the building. Do we know if the roof is good?
It's not. It's my understanding.
It's been leaking.
My understanding has been leaking.
I'm not, I'm not really getting a real comprehensive report on the condition of the building at this point. And for this amount of money and in that community. Perhaps, were you possibly asking, suggesting that we involve the town with this discussion?
Yeah, I think the people, I think the people out there and the government, whoever's out there in that sense, let them look into it and come to us with a recommendation or a solution that they found for themselves or whatever.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask the county attorney, how much time does the Board of Commissioners have to respond to the Board of Education's request on this?
And that's what I was just going to suggest. You really have three choices today. There is no time limit, although I would say that a reasonable period of time to make a decision is assumed in the law. But you really have three choices. One is to find that you have interest and purchase it. The other is to find that you have no interest and have the Board of Education dispose of it. And the third is to postpone your decision tonight until you gather additional information about the condition of the building so that you can make an informed decision. So there are three choices on the table.
I would, at this time, Commissioner, Chairman Fitzpatrick, I would like to take the, what I feel like I heard our county manager, Mr. Elliott, say that the property is just very poor. I would like to make the motion to refuse or refusal of this property.
Second then.
It's been-
What was the motion?
To refuse.
To concur with staff recommendations. It's been- Christmas.
Thank you. Just as a part of the discussion after the motion, I would, I would just suggest that the board get some idea about what sort of remediation. I think asbestos and these sorts of things are scary words. There's been a lot of litigation about it, but I think that it's also just appropriate. If we, if we do come to the conclusion to go with option two, that we just do it with, with numbers and not hypotheticals. So that would be my request, that we, that we delay decisions on it until we have a little bit better idea about what that would be. Maybe our buildings folks can weigh in on it with some real numbers. So we know that, okay, well, it's going to cost, you know, the manager stated that it would maybe cost more to fix it than to build a new one. Well, while I appreciate the opinion, I would prefer to have raw figures to back up that statement from buildings and grounds. So that's why I would not be in favor tonight of voting for two. Not to say that I'm not in favor of two, but I would be in favor of pursuing the option of just holding off until we got some more concrete figures. No, no, I was just, part of the discussion as to the primary minister.
You were stating who would do that and you said building and grounds. I mean, but is that who would-
Someone on staff.
Okay, but I, I mean, I think we need, I think that's a good idea.
That'd be engineering.
But I think we need to identify who would do it exactly.
We would probably need to have an engineer, an outside consultant coming in to tell us what are probable costs of asbestos mitigation. Tim, do you have, you want to come forward? Provide input?
And while he's coming forward, I may just say, I don't know how much information or study the school already has. And so we might be able to make additional information requests before we expend additional funds if that answers your question.
Good idea.
Yeah, I certainly think I could probably look at it, go inside as much as I could and see, you know, sounds fairly clearly what, what you can actually see with, with the eye. But, and sometimes you can tell the asbestos, you can tell that right away as well, whether it's in the floor and the ceiling, depending upon what was used and the paint type. And then we could talk to some abatement folks to see about what that would cost or something like that. First, I guess it'd need to see if it was, you know, it needed to just be torn down or if it was actually something that'd be feasible in actually repairing. I don't know much about it myself, so I'd have to take a look at it.
I think that's a great idea.
I'm in favor of pulling them out.
Mary, I believe you had a comment.
Yep. I've been waiting patiently since it is in my district. And the people do have some reason of wanting to have a recreation or some facilities that what they could have to use. I would like to see us delay that until a later time and give them a chance to look at it and determine what it is, what they like to see happen with it because they live there. And number two, there are funds floating around that may give them the opportunity to do something at this time that would be very beneficial to that township.
Commissioner Coulson.
The only thing I would say is that I was there about a year ago. The building is really poor shape. But I would not be opposed, I seconded the motion. I would not be opposed to delay this. So how do you want to handle that?
Well, I'll move, I'll substitute motion to the delay and request that staff just informally come up with some figures and just a, just a general site status and come and update us at our next, next meeting.
In addition to that, I'd like to see, Stokes has an advocacy committee that you talk with the advocacy group that has been meeting with and they stopped because of the COVID, but check with them to find out the water plant, the water facility, there's a water, something there where there's a central like place that they communicate. I'd suggest that you talk with them and give them a chance to at least discuss it. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, the substitute motion, I believe, has been moved and properly second, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairman Fitzpatrick?
No.
Where do we vote now?
The substitute motion to delay, to allow for further stay.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
No.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnally?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
No.
Motion passes six to three.
Okay, if we can now move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Ward?
No comments except Merry Christmas to everyone and have a happy holiday and safe.
Commissioner Huggins?
Merry Christmas to everybody. And again, thank you for supporting me during my term as Chairwoman.
No comment. Again, I would just like to wish everyone Merry Christmas. Commissioner Manon.
Wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. We'll see y'all in 2022.
Commissioner McLaughlin.
Merry Christmas to everybody.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Kwanzaa and all of them. Hanukkah and have a very safe and happy New Year. And be careful how you drink. Don't drive. And keep your trash in your car and put it in the right place. Ain't that right, Mr. Demmer?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we have a lot of rising trash dumps along the highway. Thank you, residents. We appreciate it.
Commissioner Coulson.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody.
And finally, Commissioner White.
Yes, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. And I want to congratulate Dan Elliott on her retirement and manager Scott Elliott too. I do apologize, I was not able to be there in person. And Scott, I just want to thank you for all the help that you've given me and my time on this school. I've had, you know, people reach out to me and ask questions. And I've got, you've always provided me answers very quickly. So I appreciate that and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White. And was that a motion to adjourn?
That was a motion.
I believe that was a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
No.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.